All right. We're going to call this Dresden meeting to order. It is 7:04 PM and our first item on the agenda is an agenda review. We have quite a few presentations which we will kind of keep to the front of our meeting, but there's been a request to have the Business Administrator Report held after the High School Council Representative Report, so I think we will entertain that given she is not supposed to be working today. That's what we'll do. Any other items on the agenda to address, review, add? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. If anybody has anything that they would like to say from the public that is not currently on our agenda, this is the opportunity to do so. We have policy BEDH, which kind of guides how public comment works and we appreciate you adhering to the policy. So if anything is not on the agenda that you'd like to discuss, please feel free to come forward. Now, if something is on the agenda, we prefer if you wait until that item is discussed, so we will entertain public comment then. So moving on, we will have the presentations and updates. The first one, we have three of these. The first is a Hanover High School vignette for the Help Hub. So if whoever wants to introduce, Julie, I see you getting up.
Oh, I'll just throw something in the trash.
So, but I believe Amy and Jane, if you folks want to come up and...
Should we all just come together?
Quick presentation and then I've got a question for everybody.
Yeah, so we are here as members of the Personalized Learning Programs Department at Hanover High School, PLP Department, and the Help Hub is one of the pieces that we're here to talk to you about tonight. So Julie asked us to come and highlight some of the programs that we have that are sort of newer or, you know, exciting. And so we want to first allow these lovely people over here who will introduce themselves. I'm Amy Good, by the way, and I'm the coordinator of the PLP Department and I'm the Academic Case Manager in the Response to Need Program. Allow these lovely people to talk to you first about the Help Hub and then we will talk to you about Academic Coaching and RTN.
Okay. So my name is Jane Leader. I am an English teacher here at Hanover High School and half my job is teaching English, half my job is supporting Help Hub in the humanities realm.
I'm Matt Buck and I do the STEM portion of the Help Hub, so STEM Resource Center, and then the other half of my job is I do ESOL student services out of the same space.
This is Hazel.
I am Hazel Tompkins. I am a Hanover High School student and I volunteer as a peer tutor at the Help Hub. And we have 17 tutors, so I'm one of 17. And we've had about 347 sessions this year and I think I really like the Help Hub and it's been a great opportunity to be able to engage with other students. And also, I use it as a resource as well as being part of the resource. So when I'm there and no one else is there, I'm able to get help. And I've seen a lot of it being very effective because I'm terrible at STEM. So all the math tutors are so nice and so helpful and are lifesavers. And then I'm there for anyone who needs like English help, essays, all that stuff. So it's a great opportunity for me and I've had the privilege of going into some classrooms and like working with students when teachers are overwhelmed and it's been really incredible.
Great. We felt as though Hazel could best speak to our work. If you have any questions for any of us, we're happy to answer them.
I think the only thing I would add, just so understanding of the Help Hub, it's a resource that's available to any students all day long, throughout the day, from when they walk in the door to when school is over, so there's peer tutoring available all day. It can be drop-in services. We also arrange students that come kind of regularly, whether it's at lunchtime or through Study Flex or if they have a free. So we try to match them up. We work with counselors and teachers quite often to kind of make it, to build it into, I would say, like, it's new, so to build it into the culture of being open to that, to peers and to ask questions or find answers. That's all.
Great. Any questions for them before we move... Yeah.
What was the genesis for the whole book?
So, we used to have a tutoring fund at Hanover High School that was used to help a few students, so maybe 10, 12 students a year, mostly ninth graders. And so we eventually started looking at that money and saying, how could we use that money to help more kids, to have it, is there a way to use it to give lots of kids opportunity for help? So it started last year with Jane. We, you know, used that money to have Jane start with a writing center and it was, was it like .4 of your job? .2 of your job last year was very small. And so we started with that and then when we were starting to want to grow that bigger, then the math and science people were like, well, wouldn't it be great for us to have it be not just a writing center, but this idea of kids also being able to get drop-in math and science help? So the intention is to, so it's bigger than it was when it was, you know, just this .2 tutoring fund with the idea, and it's in the computer lab because we really are trying to make that space where kids go to get their Chromebooks charged and fixed and all of these places, like that is a place where you could go if you need help. If you're struggling with something academic or computer-related, go there and somebody in that room will be able to help you figure out what you need and then get back out and go in. And again, some kids are, you know, are frequent flyers and some kids come in once and may never see you.
And it's, can I jump onto what you said? So, and it's increasingly becoming, we still have a ways to go, but it's becoming part of our high school parlance. It's becoming part of our culture. I was in, as a teacher, in my teacher role, I was in an IEP meeting in the last week where a student has made some strides in their work that they no longer qualify for special ed and the Help Hub came up as an option, as a place that they could have a scheduled appointment where they could come and get help and they can get help. And it also, in a lot of ways, as you all probably know from all the conversations you have in here, like, Hanover High School is very much of a pre-collegiate environment, sort of. Students have free time, they have independence, they have a lot of choice in the courses they take. Their English curriculum is very elective-based, very much like a liberal arts college. And this is kind of the industry standard in college. There's places that students seek out. And I've spoken with, I'm a part of an organization, a Writing Center Association, and I went to a conference and online and whatever, but, you know, so it's kind of giving them experience with this tool of teachers who are like, go to the Help Hub, you know, show your outline to someone in the Help Hub and to have a signature on it or something, you know, things. So teaching them, you know, equipping them with that tool for when they go to college and they're seeking out a Help Hub-type environment. If that makes sense.
Ben?
One of the comments we've gotten about this type of programming here is that some folks want to use it but don't because they're publicly seen using it in rooms like this or other people can see them getting help. Is it known that there are ways to get this sort of help, not behind closed doors, but in ways that might not be blatantly obvious to everyone what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I think Amy spoke to that. I mean, I don't know if you can chime in, but Amy spoke to that a little bit in terms of having this in the computer lab, the Help Hub being, and the idea behind that was that this is a, our original idea behind that was that this is the place where you can go if you forget your locker number. This is the place where you can go, you know. To your question, we actually have had a pretty broad range of ability levels who come in for help. If a student was concerned about that, it's certainly something, we make appointments. You know, we, students can drop in and we can pair them up with someone because we have people scheduled to be in, you know, each period of day, we have someone scheduled to be in there to work with students. They can also make appointments and if that was a concern, it's certainly, there are certainly spaces that we could make available where they could meet with a tutor one-on-one. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess not.
So some of these doors that are closed right now, like our little office rooms, I had a Zoom meeting in one of them just yesterday. So, you know, there's always little spaces and nooks where conversations can be had. And also I would say that we have students who come in, like, at a level of math, you know, where, you know, even Mr. Buck's like, okay, that's like, you know, this really advanced math, you're going to need to work with a peer tutor who's had that course before or something like that. So we have students who are coming in at all different ability levels. It's not, you know, certainly not only low, you know, students in basic classes who come in for help.
I think we're trying to create a culture of asking for help, right? So that people don't have to feel embarrassed that they need help, like there's a space in the building where anybody can go any time of the school day and get help and that's just, I hope five years from now that will be a very normal part of our culture.
Yeah. What is, just in rough terms, the relationship between supply and demand? Like, are you using half your time? Are you almost at capacity? Would you need more people to scale? I just don't have a sense of how many people are using it versus how much we have to offer.
I think we have more to offer than is being used right now, but I think we're also in our first year of getting this off the ground. So I actually think, I mean, 350 times kids have gone to get help this year. I think, so compared to 10 kids, 350 incidents and some of that is repeat. I think that's, you know, a good use of our time and our resources. And our hope again is that over time, as the culture of the school changes, we're always competing with free time at Hanover High School. Kids have free time, right? And so when they make a decision to go get help, they could also be in the calf and they could also be in the atrium and they could also be hanging out. So we are trying to make sure, and so again, this is a shift in the culture to say like, one of the things that you can be doing when you have free time is going and getting extra help. So I think we're still building and growing, but I feel like, given what's happened and the number of tutors and the number of kids who have gone, it's been really successful for its first year.
Great.
We also would like to see teachers integrating into their assignments. You know, I would like my students to integrate into an assignment for students, show your outline, take your outline to the Help Hub, you know, get another set of eyes on it before you turn it in to me, you know, just to start the training.
I have a question for Hazel. What have you learned going from student to tutor as offering help?
I think I've, I mean, in the past, I've been a peer tutor in like classes, English classes, and I think I've learned that I can't be as harsh when it's someone who's, you know, seeking out help. And I also think I've learned that people have enthusiasm about their work, but it can just be frustrating when you hit like a roadblock and it's really helpful to like add a new perspective onto a paper or something like that. Yeah.
How does scheduling work? Like, you know, so say I need help in math, I drop in, do I see you first, Matt, and then you put me in with a student or is there always like on, in that room, some kids that are kind of the math people, English people? Great question. It's a little bit of both. Right now, like, I'm always in that space, so there's times throughout the day and through the week where we do always have at least one student in there, sometimes three or four tutors available. So if that's the case, like a student will come in, they might seek somebody out and there's, you know, like we've got signs up and places that are approachable for them to come. But like if it's another, at another time of the day, like somebody walks in, like I'm going to be like the first contact, you know, in a way and I'm going to... And then you make that connect, because I'm thinking back like business school, like, you know, second year accounting people, like, you know, they worked at Deloitte, like, there was no embarrassment, like you were going to go work with that second year, but you set up, so you make these connections with, like, a... Yeah, we'll make the connections because like our tutors have gone through kind of like an application process and like there, we kind of go through and like we ask for, we would recommend them or teachers we could go to to talk to them, especially if we're looking at, because we have kids come in for honors and calculus and physics and stuff like that, so that you can't just drop somebody and have a random conversation on certain content areas. So yeah, so we'll do a little bit of both. There's arrangement, say early in the morning if somebody's there, like I will, I will do everything I can to sit down, but we might come to the point to say, let's look at your schedule, here's some times when these three people are available. And then, well, I'll kind of wrap all three of us into a conversation about just keeping them positively coming back.
It's definitely a work in progress and it's things that we're trying to tweak and polish as we go. Like, we've played around with a lot of different ways of scheduling and different ways of giving the information out so people know when particular tutors are there, who are, you know, experts in particular areas. So we're still tweaking and polishing for sure, but yeah.
One last question before we move on?
Yeah, actually, I sort of had two. Sorry, it's like, one, if we could move on, I mean, if we have time to talk about something other than the Help Hub, I sort of have...
Yeah, that's kind of what we have. There's other lovely people that were here to talk about this.
And then just a quick Help Hub question, probably for Hazel and maybe for Matt because it sounds like you sit there, or Mr. Buck, sorry. You sit there all day. How do you find, how are students finding you now? Like, is it word of mouth because they know that you've used it? Is it that teachers are recommending it? I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that the word gets spread equitably throughout the school and it's not just, you know, Hazel's friends, I mean, not that it would be, I mean, that's a great way to for word of mouth to spread too, but just sort of making sure that people know about it, so. If you know the answer, like, are you taking an intake form or something, just like, how did you hear about us?
No, no, as you were asking this question, I was like, oh, we're not collecting information. Exactly, but a few things, like we do advertise throughout the school, like on the screens, stuff's gone up on Schoology in the past. Like this past month, we really did like a targeted advertisement within the Science Department and we had one of our volunteers make signs and we said, we need them to get all the information they need within two to three seconds because that's about the attention we're going to have them for when they're passing through the hall. And, but we work with that through the Science Resource Center. John Phipps distributes it, teachers have it up in their room, so we kind of can go and target things.
I mean, I just feel like word of mouth is probably the best way to spread it, but just making sure that it spreads to their appropriate pockets.
Yeah, it's definitely something we're still working, I know, we need to move on to the next group, but it's something we're definitely, that's definitely an area of priority in terms of what we're working on. We were recently invited to present at our full staff meeting, which we did. We had a slideshow, which we chose not to bring to you all because we thought that just talking to you was like, would take up too much time. And so spoke to the full staff, told them ways they could use that we can in their classrooms, they could send students to us, they can make it as a component of assignments, et cetera. And then we followed up, on my end anyway, with the essay, and gotten like standard templates of like from social studies, from English, like what's your standard so that when a student comes in here and saying, says, oh, I'm writing a paper for CWH, you know, Hazel has a template of what that assignment is and what the students have been given so that she can provide guidance that aligns with the curriculum. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So we're, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all for being here.
So as you can see on this sheet, I mean, we're not going to read these things because you obviously have them in front of you, but the Help Hub is sort of our most generalized support service, right? And so, and then we have Study Hall and Study Strategies class. And then we're going to talk to you now about two other programs that we have, Academic Coaching and Response to Need. So why don't you talk a little bit about coaching, I'll talk about Response to Need, and then we're going to let Eva really tell you all about it. And Devin is here because she's a mental health counselor who works with us.
And one of Amy's biggest fans.
So hi, I'm Willie Johnson. I'm the head of Academic Coaching. As Amy was saying, it's on the spectrum of services. I'm kind of in the middle where I'm, have kids who are assigned to me in my classroom who be with me three times a week, two blocks, one short on a Wednesday. And I review both their school records, informations on Power School and School Resource Management System on Schoology, try to help them consider what needs to be prioritized, what do they need to work on, how do they have time management, how do they record things to make sure that they know when they're going to be doing it, how to develop plans in that sort of manner and try to account for the rest of their life, you know, try to help them think about, are you playing a sport after school? Do you have other commitments that your family are going to be, that you need to be doing with your family? So try to help them see big picture in terms of how does school fit in with their life and try to help coast them through that. And other things like resource management, you should clean out your backpack every once in a while, things like that, giving them folders. And also a little bit of response inhibition of, you're on your phone, I'm taking that. So I, things like that, little things, and then, you know, I think that's sort of, I'm trying to help them be more independent. You know, I think having worked with Amy in RTN is one of my positions I had been previously. You know, I've seen how Amy does it and I've tried to kind of back off. And I think it comes from what the lineage of my program is, is from weekly academic advising. And when it had been just once a week, when I met with students for 20 minutes once a week, I kind of did that for two years and I thought that model was... week, I kind of did that for two years, and I thought that model was such that I didn't feel like I was impacting the students as much as I could. I wasn't helping them as much as I could. So after two years of doing weekly academic advising, I went to the counseling department and advocated to say, can we grow this role a little bit bigger in terms of how often I meet with students to help make sure, you know, a week-to-week follow-through is a long time for a high school student. You know, I think even sometimes the two days from a Monday to a Wednesday feels like a long time for me with my students. But, you know, I think in the last two years, I've been really happy about having more of a classroom setting and having more distinct time when I can, also monitoring students working, because I think often prior, when I had sent students out to work on something, they would get stuck. And often, I'm finding in my classroom, I'm helping students consider how to unstuck themselves, helping them draft emails to teachers, helping them consider, do they go talk to Matt Buck about something in the Help Hub if I'm not so sure with science? Things like that, just trying to help them not feel like there's an impasse with their school and their education.
And then RTN is sort of our highest level of service, and that is where we're working with students who are in a real moment of need. Things are not going very well, and they need some help digging out and finding their way back onto their academic path. And so I'm actually going to let Eva talk to you, because Eva is a graduate of RTN, and she is now in Academic Coaching. So I'm going to let her talk about what that experience has been like.
Yeah, so I started RTN because I was falling behind, and I just really needed to work on my like time management and keeping up with work. And I guess when I first got into RTN, I kind of felt like more of a punishment than I...
She didn't like me.
We're friends now. We're friends. But, yeah. But, so the first few weeks were kind of tough, but it was just like getting into routine and figuring things out, transitioning, building habits, setting goals, stuff like that. And then I had weekly meetings with a counselor that were scheduled for me, which helped a lot with everything else that was going on. And I had daily conversations with Ms. Good about planning what I was going to do for the day, which felt like, which did feel like nagging at first, and then it was like, oh, no, she's trying to help me. And it really did, it really did help set a basis for a lot of things. And she made a plan book for me, which was, ended up helping a lot. And I guess it was another thing that like RTN helped with, sorry, I mean those. Yeah, but I also gained a support system with RTN. Bethany and Ms. Good became sort of like, not only just like people that could, I guess, I go to for RTN because I have to, but I can just go there as like a safe space if I need a break or if I need to, if I need help with anything, I can go there during a study hall. And yeah, I guess at the end of RTN, I really began to apply myself. I was motivated because I saw myself doing better thanks to the help of Ms. Good and my counselor. And yeah, and then I graduated from RTN because my grades were better and went to Academic Coaching. And it's, it's not the same, but it allowed me to like maintain my habits from RTN instead of just going from complete and total freedom, all my free periods back afterwards. I actually appreciate Academic Coaching a lot. But he does the check-ins, the daily check-ins too, and he helps with classwork if you need it. And if you're done with your work, you can go. So in that way, it's kind of a step up from RTN. But they were both really, really helpful for me and definitely got my stuff together a little bit. So yeah.
Yeah, good, good. Couldn't have said it better. Thank you so much. Any questions for us about either of these programs or, I mean, I guess anything else on this sheet?
Are coaching in RTN something that a student, it's on their schedule as a class?
They are not credit earning, but they are in the schedule. So they're attendance bearing, but not credit earning. So if, when a student is enrolled in RTN or coaching, it goes into their schedule. And so we mark them, absent, present, you know, whatever. But as soon as the student graduates from it, it disappears. So there's no, you know, permanent record of it being on a student's schedule.
And are they, sorry?
Yeah, I know.
It's multiple people at a, in a session at the same time?
Yes, yes, there's more than, yes, there's more than one kid. I think we can take up to eight.
I think my enrollment cap is eight, and I think my biggest section is seven, six, whatever.
And RTN is a space that, you know, there are fluctuations in things that happen. We also, students who are in school suspension spend the day with us, getting this same sort of model, you know, academic case management and counseling. So it's a fluctuating space. So there's always varieties of kids in there, yeah.
I'm wondering, like, what is the timeline generally for the transition from RTN to Academic Coaching? How long do students spend in each?
Such a good question. So we, RTN is a nine-week program, and we, you know, lay that out very carefully at the beginning when we're meeting with families about what kids are signing up for. Sometimes students are done with us earlier than nine weeks, but nine weeks is a quarter. So basically, we're saying, we're going to invest this level of service for a quarter to see how things are going and to help you get off the ground. And most, almost every student is done after nine weeks. And then we say, what's the next best step? Some students leave and they don't go to coaching, they just are independent. Some students go to coaching. Students who are in ninth grade, they often will go to Study Strategies class if it fits into their schedule. So we try to look at like, what's the best match for a, you know, the step downs that we possibly can. And then we also are supporting students who are making a transition to special education. So if we feel like a student really is going to continue to struggle without this level of support, my background is as a learning specialist, I was a special education teacher at Hanover High School before I did this, then we might make a special education referral, and that student would stay with us until that process was complete.
Lisa?
Yeah, I know Study Strategies is a credit course. Does it make sense, or is it, would it be cumbersome to have coaching and RTN also get credit? Like, I'm just thinking about the kids who are sitting there, having a credit for the work that they're doing just might be helpful to them.
I guess in terms of, because I also teach Study Strategies. In terms of the lessons that I present in Study Strategies versus what I do in Academic Coaching, I don't provide, in an Academic Coaching setting, I don't provide a lesson to the group of five, six students I have. From when we've had conversations, it's been a possibility, but I think it would take something else like that to have either setting be credit paying. And I want to...
Yeah, and I think, I mean, learning strategies are special education services, are credit earning, and I think that some of that is protective of students' privacy, right? Like, I think things that are credit earning show up on a transcript, and you have to explain them. And I think these are things that are meant to support students, but not, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I personally feel like there would be a need for that, but, and, and yeah, there are kids who don't like it at the beginning, and they want half free time. But usually, kids come around and are, and kids, some kids are with Billy for...
Right, and so in terms of, yeah, and I do quarterly reviews to try to turn over my enrollment. My enrollment is not elective based, it is something that is by referral base from counselors. And also, students who come off of IEPs sometimes land with me when they're going on to 504s. So, yeah, it is hard to...
I just want to say, I really appreciate you talking about the privacy of being in RTN, which makes me even more grateful that you're willing to come and reflect in a wonderful way about the benefit and the value, because that serves to model the validity of the program and also how important it was or could be for other students. So thank you.
Neil?
And this, I think I heard the answer that Michael got from the question, but I want to ask it again, for both the RTN program and Help Hub, are we, are we undersubscribed at the moment? I'm going to turn to Julie and figure out, like, is this something that we need to consciously look at maybe increasing budget funding for? Like, what's the trajectory of this? What are we looking at from a, like a funding responsibility?
So forty, so up to now, there have been 48 students who have used Academic Coaching over the course of the year. And we've had 26 kids go be enrolled in RTN. We've also had 38 incidents of in-school suspension that we have, you know, worked with for the day. And, and RT, you know, RTN is a point, is point six of what I do, which, I mean, I think it works out. It's been bigger, certainly during the pandemic, and we were grateful it existed, I think, at times during that, because it gave us a, you know, places to flow and to grow. I don't feel like we're overwhelmed right this second. I feel like we have the resources we need to do what we're trying to do. You know, there are some days where I'm like, whoa, this is a lot. And then, but it evens out and it figures itself out. So we also have an ed assistant who works with us in RTN, so that I have the flexibility to be able to go and do other things as needed, overseeing all of these programs. And, and that's Bethany, who Eva was referring to, she stays in the space, so.
And likewise for the Help Hub too, its capacity exceeds...
I would say, I would say it's, I mean, it's growing. I think, I would say it's sort of in its infant stage and hopefully getting bigger. I don't, I don't, right now, I don't feel like with any of these pieces, we are in need of more staffing for where we are right now. And RTN, this is the sixth year of RTN actually. And so, and I think it's, you know, the numbers of it fluctuate between what we're doing on any given year, but it feels like it's just a solid part of what we're, of what we're doing. But I don't, I don't feel like it needs to be more at this point.
Ben?
Just to clarify, is RTN required when it's referred?
It's not, no. So we meet in PST, and so referral is made, we meet in PST and say, yes, we believe this is the service that the student is in need of. And then the counselor reaches out to the family. So a parent is asked, would you like to put this, add this to your student's schedule? And only then do we, do we put it in. So we would never say, we've had people refuse us, you know, people say, no, thank you, I don't, we don't need that, that's not for us. So no, it's not required.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It took up more of your time. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our, our next presentation will be an Athletic Director update. I think Megan's going to be coming forward, but we just wanted to get an understanding about what's going on with athletics. And we've hired an assistant athletic director the past couple of years, and so as this is kind of a growing department, we just wanted to understand what's going on, and if Megan can let us know what's going on, that would be great.
Yeah, so, right, two years ago, we added the Assistant Athletic Director position, which I think has been a great benefit to not just athletics, but the school overall. We have a really robust athletic program. And, you know, as I talked about when we added the position, you know, we have more participation, more teams, more opportunities than any school of our size in New Hampshire. And I think that's an important part of what we do at Hanover High School. And it was very difficult to do without an Assistant Athletic Director. With an Assistant Athletic Director, it is definitely more manageable. It's still a lot, and there's still, you know, more to do, but I think that we've, you know, added some things, done some things better than, you know, previously, because, you know, we have the time to be able to do that. I think particularly, we're, we've been working on more opportunities for more students, and I think part of that has been our development teams, which we've been able to expand, which I think has been really important, because typically, these, you know, as we know, our athletic program is very competitive, and most of our programs, you have to have play from the time you were this big, or, you know, you can't be on a varsity team. And that's, that's a challenge for kids that just want to get involved. So I think that the growth of those has been really important. Some of the other things that we've done, social media, because that's what kids want. So we've expanded that, and I think that's helped, you know, obviously with the new mascot as well, and branding, and, you know, getting people excited about coming to events and all of that. Just looking through some of the notes that you guys have, so I don't want to go over all of that. But some of the things that we've been able to do, equipment and uniform management, that was mostly in the coaches' hands before. I mean, with 66 teams, trying to manage uniforms for 6016 is a lot. So we've been able, we've set up an inventory system, so we're able to check it out more like library books and all that, so we can keep track of stuff, which has been important. And holding kids accountable when they don't bring it back, like that could be a full time to get them out and get them in, so that's been great. We've increased participation, part of that is development programs, and part of it is just, you know, expansion of teams, and I think doing more outreach. We started doing outreach at RMS. We actually have a lunch gathering on Friday for fall sports for eighth graders, so we're going to have our teams go and talk about the opportunities. We started a survey, so we have an idea of kind of what's coming from RMS, and then also sending schools. So anytime the counselors get something, we send that out so we can get an idea of, you know, who wants to do what, and just make people aware of, you know, all the programs that we offer. The facility use has increased a great deal, and that's helpful to have two people, because someone needs to be managing the weight room. In terms of the gym, like, we only have that open when someone's here, which, you know, with two people, we're here a lot more. Well, maybe not a lot more, I might be here less, but we're both here more together. And I think one of the big things too, has been able to be involved in the school community, better able to, we all did March intensives in our department, which previously I wasn't able to do, it's the week before spring sports start, so it's super busy. Having an advisory, I have an advisory, our system AD has an advisory. I think having, we've just had more interaction with students because we have the time to do that. And I think people feel more comfortable because they see us around rather than me being in my office, behind my desk, answering emails, trying to do scheduling, all of that. So just better able to be a part of the school community, better able to attend meetings, that before it was like, no, it's raining, I can't do anything today except reschedule events. So I think that that's been important to, to, to the school. We have a new registration system, which has been great for any parents that have done that, when you have to just re-sign someone up, it literally takes like 10 seconds versus before it was, you had to fill everything out all over again. We started pep rallies, which we're still working on getting a little more school spirit. So some students seem to really like it, some not so much, so, you know, we're working on that. But I think trying new things is important and see kind of what takes. And I think us being able, you know, we have 70 paid coaches, that's a lot to supervise for one person, so I think that's been helpful. We actually, I think we had six new coaches last year or this year, so being able to mentor them, head coaches, so being able to help them, you know, navigate the school. Most of our coaches come from the outside, so that's a little bit challenging. So being able to be able to spend time with them and mentor them has, I think, been really important.
Any questions for Megan? Ben?
Thanks for this, Megan, really appreciate it. I'm a little nervous with the increase of three-sport student athletes in terms of time management and whether they have the time realistically to be in three sports and do well academically. And there were several comments in our recent survey that said similar things. And what are your thoughts on whether that's a good thing that we're seeing a pretty big expansion?
I think it's a good thing. I think that, you know, the input that we get is that students are better able to manage their time when they're busier. And I think that, you know, kids, you talk to kids that are in season, and it's like, I know I have to get this done, I need to use my study hall time, I need to make sure I'm using my free periods, rather than just go home and, oh, I have, you know, a lot of time. It's like, I think if you talk to students, they're better off when they're in season. So I think that's something we've tried to increase and tried to, we started giving out three-sport athlete t-shirts, just to encourage, you know, more participation. I think what we're seeing across the country is specialization. I think what we're seeing across the country is specialization of sports, and I don't think that's healthy. You have kids playing soccer year-round and that's the only sport they play. So, being able to say, oh, I'm going to play JV baseball and I can still, you know, and these kids are still doing their sport year-round. Like, I, I'm coaching softball. I have two girl freshmen that have never played, ninth grader, sorry, that have never played softball before. And we only have a varsity program. They're very athletic, but they're year-round soccer players. So, today, they literally had their softball pants on, their lightning soccer team was practicing on the field over there. Like, coach practices over, can I run over to soccer? Take off their pants, they had their soccer shorts on and ran over and played soccer. So, those kids are going to do that anyway, but it's going to be outside the school. And I think having them inside the school and us being able to have a little more control and support for what they're doing is a good thing.
Do you track how many are doing non-school sports at the same time they're doing school sports?
We don't. I mean, there, so there's a state rule that you can't, you can't miss any in school, in-season athletics for out-of-season stuff. So, you know, it's difficult to do, but people navigate it, but we don't, we don't keep track of that.
Any other questions? Neil?
Two questions if I may, Chair. One is, new Title IX regulations just dropped. Any impact that you're aware of at this moment?
In terms of the state legislation or, I mean, talk about the transgender?
That's where I was going to go with my second question. The first question was just, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at the revised Title IX regulations. I don't know if anything substantially has changed that would require anything for us to do at a policy level here.
We haven't had a legal update yet, no.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then I will go, so the second question is, have we had issues yet in New Hampshire? I was looking specifically at our policy just before I'd asked this question. So, we're explicit that interscholastic competitive sports teams, those students can play on the team with the team that they identify with. Have we had issues with that?
We have not had issues and we have quite a few transgender students participating. And I'm very concerned about the legislation that's out there because that would have a huge impact on our programs and our students.
Any other questions?
Just a quick two-part question. First part is, do you think there are things that we can do to strengthen middle school athletics that would help high school athletics? And if so, like, what are your ideas on that?
Well, we don't have, we don't have middle school athletics, so.
Free to opine on it.
Adding, adding middle school athletics would help strengthen our program. You know, I think that right now, because we don't, we don't have control over it and the rec department is running it, we don't, the sports that they offer are the sports they offer. You know, there's not softball, there's not volleyball, there's, you know. And, you know, a lot of parent coaches, not that that wouldn't necessarily happen because it's hard to find coaches for middle school sports, but I think what we've found, being able to reach out to RMS and sort of talk to those kids before they get here, would be enhanced by having middle school sports because we could have, you know, we could do clinics, we can have them come to varsity practice, you know, those kind of things.
Lisa? Or was that? Did you have a second? You're good.
Cover the waterfront. I'm also a tribute to what happens with parent coaches. I'm what you get as a baseball coach. It's a rec program.
It's a good thing in a lot of cases.
Yes, in many, many cases.
Yes.
In many, many cases. Lisa?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to go back to the three-sport athlete thing, just to be clear about what, like, what that means from our athletic department. It means that a, that a student is playing a sport in each of the three seasons, you know. And I would say, from my perspective, having had two three-sport athletes now, it encourages them to try something that they wouldn't have tried otherwise. And I just came here from a lacrosse team where there are three seniors on it right now who have never played lacrosse in their lives and just decided, why not? We did football and we did, you know, basketball or hockey and we don't have anything going on right now and let's try lacrosse. And I really appreciate the fact that the athletic department is open to that because there aren't a lot of high schools that would let you as a senior pick up a lacrosse stick for the first time and actually be on the field. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a question, but just, because I'm going to talk to Megan since our athletic committee advisors, but just so you know, and I think Tim, I'm not sure if I CC'd you guys, but obviously the athletic advisory committee, we disbanded just because it didn't have a, literally, but we were obviously spending a lot of time on middle school sports when we were meeting. And just so Megan knows and I think Tim as well, I did take all of, I kind of put together a bunch of slides and bullets and summarized all that for something to J along with some of the data that we got from the other area programs and stuff. So, all that, those, I don't know, six or seven years' worth of meetings. So, now, move over to your group.
Any other questions? I have one, but then also I note that there is a member of the public online, so if you have any questions, I will be opening it up for public comment in a second. But just kind of going back to the assistant athletic director position when it was created and formulated, I think the idea was to kind of help transition some of these developmental teams, they didn't have to travel so far, to kind of create more of this like inters- local school kind of play. Like, what's, what's the plan there or what's the thought?
Yeah, and we have done that. And, you know, with our either developmental or JV2 or freshman, you know, basically what happens at the state level is if the other schools have programs, they build you a schedule where we would be traveling all over the state. But with the assistant athletic director, we're able to say, actually, we don't want to do that. We're going to go to Hartford and we're going to go to Woodstock and we're going to, you know, so more local competition. I mean, we, when we were talking about the assistant athletic position, one of the things like kept getting brought up was intermurals. But we found that, I mean, that's really hard to do because intermurals is, you're going to play this team. We don't have enough students that want to do that because we have so many students participating on teams we have. But what we've done is we've taken those lower-level teams and made them more local competition and open to everyone. Unfortunately, in some programs, we still have to make cuts. But, you know, philosophically, we have a sport, at least one sport each season, that does not have cuts, so you can participate, you know, it might not be the sport you want if you didn't make the hockey team or, you know, but there's something you can do. So, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we'll continue to work with those and figure out, you know, what the right sports are. I mean, one of the issues is facilities. So, you know, I feel like we could have a tennis program for sure, but we don't have any courts to use. Hard enough for our varsity and JV teams to find, you know. So, just sort of navigating that and figuring out where the need is, what students want, you know, the increased use of the weight room has been great. We have a new class where they can use that. So, you know, I think developing some more fitness sort of training might be a direction we could go where it would be competition, but, you know, that kind of stuff.
It's kind of like what Neil had asked the previous groups, so just as far as we're thinking about budgets, do you plan, we've got our offsite, so where, do you think like when you're looking ahead and you're just like, there's 33 varsity sports, 500 kids participating, like, what if you had kind of, do you need more budget for things? I mean, you know, look, we've got that one turf field, we've got that new field I think that's going to open up now that was grassed and hopefully, you know, it sounds like we've got, at least the baseball team got off to a good start. I mean, where would you kind of look at the budgets? Because we never got to there as our athletic committee, that was where we were going to get into, kind of how we can help advocate for what you need when you get down to budget season, right? Because the athletic budget, you know, it's pretty small. There's not, you know, coaches and uniforms and there's not a lot there for what you're trying to do. So, what, do you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of things, like, one thing being facilities is a huge issue. If we had another turf field, that would help us a ton because there's lots of times we can't use, you know, the wet fields, particularly in the spring. So, you know, that, that's one thing, you know, tennis courts, you know, developing the Dresden site, we have no bathrooms out there, we have no shelter out there, you know. That's, I think, an issue, just with weather and lightning and all that stuff. So, you know, I think facilities would be, would be one. I think the other, you know, we rely a lot on friends groups and that's a whole nother can of worms in terms of what they're doing with money, whether they're internal accounts, external accounts. But a lot of our programs, you know, football has to raise a whole lot of money to buy their equipment because, you know, their budget's like $2,000 for us to, you know, that buys 10 helmets, you know. So, I would say that's the other thing. And then, and then I would say, let me add one more is, you know, going back to the whole pay-to-play, we're still, I think, in the minority of schools that charge athletes. So, you know, that's a budget issue. Most people don't blink an eye at it and we have a waiver process and all of that. But I think that, you know, if we want to support our teams fully, then maybe we shouldn't have to, you don't have to pay to take a lab class or, you know.
Any other questions? Okay, members of the public, anything seen done? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Oh, you did just have a hand go up.
Oh, did we?
Yeah. Can you move Kate over? Kate, if you want me, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. This is Kate Hilton. This isn't the actual public comment, it's just comment on that last piece.
It's agenda item, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. I'll stay silent till the last. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, we, we tend to open up for public questions based upon the agenda item and then we will also have, just confirming that it is there, that, yeah, number 11, public comment will be at the end of the meeting, in addition to what we had at the beginning. So, thanks. Okay, NEASK, Linda, would you like to?
Hi, I'm Sinda Dante and I'm here to just give the board a very quick update because y'all know how much I love talking about NEASK and council. And this is basically the context, I want, I just want to frame it a little bit for those who might be listening, so that, you know, the whole NEASK thing is probably a more extended process than people realize. Last year, the school was involved in a self-reflected collaborative process where they looked at the practice according to the standards that NEASK has. And then they wrote up a report and we had a visiting team come. They basically met with students, teachers, community members, they reviewed our report. And we received their report, which is now on the website, so people can go in and read those details about what the visiting team said about us. There are also commendations and recommendations there. And you can also find the NEASK standards, which we try to align with. So, there you are, you're up to date. So, why we are here tonight is because now we're going into the next phase. There is a decennial visit, which happens about two years after, but not really, because we start preparing for it next year. And then we'll have a visiting team come back to our high school in March. So, on March 30th, that's a Sunday, they'll probably arrive on Monday, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I have done a decennial visit, yes, it was, at an elementary school. But this kind of gets me to the point, which is probably the most important point I'm going to share tonight, because Neil had asked, why do we do NEASK? And I have to say, first of all, it is a process that goes from K on up through college, so it is across all grade levels. It is also incredibly important because there are standards that are research-based, which we are as schools asked to align to. And so, these are, again, sort of that, you know, hard, critical factor that we often say, what are we talking about? We talk about what we need to do here if we want all of our students to be successful learners. So, that's the criteria that's used. Another thing that happens that I have to say that is just amazing is that we know when you're in a school, it's really busy. And finding that time to sit with each other and reflect about things of importance is really challenging. And NEASK, that's part of the process you buy into when you go for accreditation. And I have to say, what you have noticed or what you would notice if you looked at the report. And then what we've done, which is in the slide presentation, I want everybody to know, that will be up for the community to see as well as the board. There are some comments made about what has already happened this year in response because the biggest banner item from the decennial visit, when they come, is they're going to be looking at our four growth areas. Two of them involve curriculum, documentation, okay? And then also a way of looking at it and assessing it and helping it to stay, right? As sort of a growing representative document of what we do here to help support our learners. That's one and two of our, our goals that we have in this school. Goal three is about looking at, ta-da, the strategic plan, which you guys worked on, right? Portrait of a learner, which is community, critical thinking, come on, guys, can you name it? What are the other two?
Responsibility.
And responsibility. And responsibility came from our students, right? Okay, so those are also described. And then we have the Dresden mission statement, which, by the way, is also the high school mission statement. Okay, so that makes it easy, doesn't it? Because we're talking about, and I always put hearts first, mine's hearts and voices. My point is, this is important because we're all on the same page now. And we have goals. And our charge for the high school is to demonstrate how we're growing. You just heard three fine presentations that really named places where growth is happening, right? And that's the same thing we'll be doing when they come back. And that's why part of what's in the slide presentation are some of the areas where, you know, they've targeted growth and they're looking for what's going to happen next. So, that's all I have.
Questions?
Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Just thank you for being so excited about this.
Oh, yeah. It's almost pathological, but I just, just don't ask me about council. Oh, no, wait, I have one thing about council. So, the fourth one is, is well-being of students and staff. And I'm looking at Josh because council has really taken off the mantle of bringing that topic into students' frame of reference. There's a mental health motion where this was the student life committee, they're looking for a wellness room. And there's a five-minute break, which was a resolution, which really had a humongous, I love that word, amount of brain research, which again, you should go to the council page and look at. So, you know, students are really looking at how they can take some responsibility to, to think about well-being. And they've also called upon administration to look at two things. One, kind of the beginning of the day, so that late start, I'm looking at Josh again, this is one of his favorite items. It starts with the school day, again, for mental health reasons. And, and the other one, walking on the other one too, have to look it up, but I'm going to stop now because you have a long meeting and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Anything from the public? Seeing done, I will move to council rep.
Well, first, I want to thank Mrs. Dante for just highlighting, I guess, council's focus, I think, over the past year on student well-being. And some of the things that council has done recently align very much with that focus. So, I, gosh, about a month ago now, more than a month ago, council failed the no award ceremonies motion, which was brought way back in the beginning of the year. It was a recommendation though by the admin committee to fail this motion because they wrote up recommendations to the administration about changes that could be made to end-of-year award ceremonies, which I read were accepted and have been implemented by the administration. So, some of these changes include, like, parents being notified by the main office if their student is receiving an award in advance. In addition, coordinators will review lists of award winners at the coordinators' meeting to review any major overlaps. One of the main concerns among students were a small group of students receiving too many awards, essentially. In addition, including a common format for announcing awards and putting criteria for awards in the program of the award ceremony. So, basically, for the common format, students would, there wouldn't be any specialized message that's read out to the entire student body. It would just be the awards read, then the student stands up, they wouldn't walk up to the stage, and then after the ceremony, they would go and collect their award. Council also passed the five-minute break motion, a resolution, as Mrs. Dante mentioned. And so, this encourages teachers to allow students to move around the room in the middle of our block period. in the middle of our block periods. And as she mentioned, this is really grounded in lots of research done about like the brain and how students learn best. And I think council really, um, I heavily supported this. And I think many students who you just talked to at the high school, typically have this feeling where it's difficult to sit through almost a 90-minute block period. So I am hopeful that this will really help. Then council also passed the curriculum committee's retro day motion. So, which me and Ms. Nelson were involved with. And this recommends that one Monday would be set aside for a retro day, which would be in the theme of Y2K. This was a recommendation to the administration, so we wrote up a schedule, essentially. And this would encourage students and teachers to give up technology, so there are like phones and computers for that day. So we're thinking that's something that will be exciting and hopefully can happen this year. And then we also have been discussing and reviewing council's election bylaws. So one motion which was brought at the last meeting but hasn't been formally voted on, but I still wanted to share with you guys, was the staff membership bylaw revision. So currently, the process for electing staff members to council is that any vote, any person who can vote in the election, so a student or a staff member, can vote for a student or a staff member. Then staff in each grade gets a certain number of representatives. And then there's an at-large delegation. That's like the most bare bones way I can describe it as. But this motion would change it so that, uh, staff representation would be by department. It wouldn't necessarily change how staffer voted for, students could still vote for staff. Members of all departments could vote for staff. But this recommends that, or suggests the idea that staff membership being made more equal throughout departments, rather than a few departments being heavily represented. So that is something that council is discussing currently, in addition to several other changes to our bylaws in regards to how elections work.
Any questions? Yeah, please.
Is this your last meeting with us?
I think I have one more.
I think you should.
So I think this is my second to last.
Okay, then we hope to say goodbye. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to miss that opportunity.
And you better come to that last meeting.
I'll probably come for some.
Any questions, comments? No. I did have to chuckle when you were saying Y2K is like without technology, because, you know, we didn't have any technology in the year 2000. For all of us that remember that. Okay, anything from the public? Great. Yeah, okay, great. And now, um, we did adjust our agenda at the beginning of the meeting to have our business administrator report happen now. So if Jamie, if you are ready.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
I remember Y2K. I have to tell you a quick little snippet. Y2K, I was at Vermont Yankee at midnight when the clock struck midnight and went over. We were, I was helping a group feed the troops down there, it was very exciting. Anyway, if you drop down to the business manager section, there are a host of attachments, apologies for doing it yesterday and today. I've been traveling for family. That's one that they've got done later. The first one that you'll see attached is just an overview. I was, um, one of the class of 1974, Dave Croory, reached out to me. I, I'm going to say it was probably January or February, with some questions about an idea that the class of 1974 was discussing about an alumni legacy gift fund. And so I've attached a brief about that idea and what they're potentially hoping to do at their 50th anniversary, which I believe is occurring in August. So that is just for your review, to see, you know, what may potentially be coming up. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. I do owe Mr. Croory a phone call. He did reach out to me to try to have a conversation while I was away. So I'll do that this week coming up. But that's just for your review and for your information. I've also attached the unaudited surplus projection overview. And that is through April 22nd, which is yesterday. The very first item is the overview of all those other documents that are posted. It's the general fund document. And so sometimes I share this with you and walk you through it. I don't know if you want me to do that or not, but I'm going to do it quickly because I do know that you have a lot going on. Here we go. So on the top, it shows you an overview of all the expenditures that are on the second page and where we're trending at the moment. So you can see for expenses, we're trending a surplus of about $434,000 at the moment. I do have a few requests for transfers of funds that I've been sitting on because I wanted to see where we were at. Also in revenues, there's a projected variance that's favorable of about $209,000. So a couple of reasons for that. Tuition came in a little bit higher than we had initially budgeted. And we also got an offsetting revenue for, um, an additional expenditure for the Krista McAuliffe. We had a teacher who won a Krista McAuliffe award and has been doing some work on that. So when you put it all together, the operational fund balance for the general fund is about $643,000. We add in the retainage that we're sitting on, that would bring our projection up to 913. We would give back 400, which we've done during the budget process for 2425, which, if my numbers come to fruition, would give a unassigned surplus of about 513. At that point, we could decide, uh, we would decide what kind of, um, retainage that we would want to do. You know, because we set, the revenues get set in October. So we look at all of our options for 2425. And as long as they're on target, then this may be what would be available. And you all can look through all of that. And if you have any questions, uh, you just let me know, just reach out and let me know. Then about a few more items down, there is an unaudited surplus of, and I don't know, can you see that one? This is all the special revenue funds. And so it goes through the grant funds, the food service operations, March Intensive, your athletic funds, which is what Megan was talking about, the special gift funds for both schools. And then each of the schools has student activity funds. So you can see what we started with, beginning balances, what the revenue has been so far and what the expenditures have been so far. And so anybody has any questions, uh, public included, please email me and I'll be happy to answer any questions. All of the expanded reports are here for your review. I do just want to speak to a couple of the items. I have a really early, um, meeting in the morning at Marion Cross. And so I need to get prepped for that. But thank you for letting me go at the top of the agenda. Um, I'm just going to point out that you also have attached the Dresden MS-22 form, which is item F for action. And that's just the report that we file with the state of New Hampshire, based on what the appropriations were as voted. We do a similar thing for Hanover as well. I believe I put the front page that needs signatures in with the expenditures. You also have as item G, the tuition rates to set for Hanover High School and Richmond Middle School. And they've been done in the traditional manner. They're down just a little bit, not a heck of a lot, due to the change in the payoff for the building costs. But as we were moving that, we approved a teachers' union agreement. So they kind of almost, they almost washed, it was pretty close. So, the, that information is there for you as well. I don't think anything else is mine tonight.
Any questions for Jamie? Okay, great. Um, Jamie, I do like to see that we do have a surplus, which will help bolster our, um, our retainage, which is a bit lower than we would probably prefer, since that is our really only reserve type fund in Dresden. So I'm putting a, a prediction out there that we might be, uh, looking to, to see some of that in October.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. And again, reach out if you have any questions, because I'm going to leave you now.
All right.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So then, Tim, for an RMS principles report. And just given the time too, if you want to be brief, I don't think anybody would.
Entertaining any questions? The only update we had was it was too windy on Monday to launch our balloons. I know, we would have launched them and they would have ended up in water. Didn't want to chase all the kids down Lime Road chasing their balloons. So hopefully on Friday, we'll have the balloon launch. It's been, uh, rather difficult to get everything done. But we have to get it done before next Wednesday, because that's when our eighth grade takes off from Montreal and New York. So we're coming at that time of the year when everything gets really compressed. So other than that, that's pretty much the update we have. It's busy, busy between now and the end of the year. Testing started today. We got through it. Nothing crashed. Everybody seems to be okay, although the energy's a little off, but it'll be all right. But most of it done by Thursday. Good to go after that.
Any questions? Yeah.
How did the robotics team do? Robotics team, this is, it depends on who you talk to. They all think that they did, we didn't do very well. They finished in the top 50 out of 150 teams. Tom Hermanson and Jess Workettine, who were there, said that one of the teams they talked to from one of the organizations has had a team at the world championships every year since 1987. So, or 19, 1997. So we're up against some teams who have a fair amount of consistent past experience. All of our students are brand new at it. They had a really good experience, I think they had a really fun time. Individually, I think they did well. There were some great pictures of them working collectively with teams from Thailand and Switzerland. You didn't really speak English very well, so they had to sort of figure out how things work. So I think it was a great experience. They didn't win, which for some of them was, you know, exactly what they needed to do. We're hoping to go back.
Thanks, Tim. And it looks like from the picture, uh, at least a cardboard cutout of Taylor Swift was there as well.
Right. I was wondering if Taylor Swift and Travis Kelce were coming back with them, but they didn't make the flight to Montreal.
Thank you, Tim. Julie, for the high school principles report.
I feel like you've got a high school update for the last hour. I just, if you want at some point to hear from our balloon, NASA crew, let me know and they can come and speak to you. I would encourage you to come to Mean Girls, which will be on that 10th, 11th, 12th weekend. If tickets are an issue, let us know. Same thing, mega concert, would be good to go to our art show. All the things that are there, just everything's on display and it's uplifting. So please, please do that. And, um, you know, we're in sectioning, so we just decide on what we're running next year, what we're not going to run. We're now putting the students into that matrix and mixing it up and we'll see what comes out. We're using everything you gave us. So in order to run all the things that we feel like our students are asking for, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Julie? Anything from the public? So moving on to business requiring discussion. Jamie alluded to this before, but, um, our first item is the DOE MS-22. So this is the report, as, as Jamie mentioned. If we have any questions on that, we probably need to call Jamie back. But, um, any questions?
Do you have a cover sheet that you're supposed to sign?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, this is something else that I'm supposed to sign every page of.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah. Seeing none and nothing from the public. Um, moving on to committee assignments. I believe everyone has seen a version of this before. This is just, um, kind of our board committee and leadership assignment. Some of this we've already voted on, this being, you know, board leadership positions. And some of this was kind of discussed after a four chairs meeting to try to balance needs and availability and fairness across all of our different committees. Of course, this meeting, we're just kind of looking at the blue section, the Dresden assignments. But this is kind of the opportunity to speak now or forever hold your peace and that kind of thing. And, and we wanted to show all of them. Even though this isn't the Hanover or Norwich RSD-70 boards, but just to kind of get a level of fairness across, but that was kind of the point. So you didn't just see one board at a time. So if any questions on that, I think Norwich and Hanover have both kind of looked at this before. So it shouldn't be a surprise. All right, and then, moving on, I doubt there's any public comment on who does what, but, yes.
I don't know. So on those, right? So we did look, just so people like, well, why did I ask for something, did it get it? And we also looked at time commitment. And then sometimes even simple things where this year's time commitment might be less than normal because the negotiations for something is not happening this year. So therefore, so that is part of the consideration as well. We're trying to keep it even as far as busyness, just not number.
Yeah, and if you're thinking you could do more, there might be more opportunities throughout the year. So, um, you know, feel free to, uh, to let us know. But I think this is kind of what we're moving forward with. And I know a lot of committees are already working and scheduled meetings and stuff like that, so. And then the next is kind of board retreat topics. This was, actually, we had a four chairs meeting this morning to kind of talk about more about the board retreat topics. It seems like there is a consensus that we will likely have some sort of pre-work for the board to do before our retreat. There'll be, um, there's listed here kind of what the general topics for the retreat would be. Kind of a prioritization. Think about all of the kitchen sink items that have been discussed and, and thinking about kind of what's the temperature of the board on urgency, importance, don't do this at all, kind of feedback. So we can at least kind of start to consolidate. And I think it would be helpful, at least this board chair would really appreciate understanding what Dresden topics people want to hear throughout the next year. And, you know, we kind of think about goals and our strategic planning alignment. So there's kind of this prioritization work. So I think Jay will be developing a survey that will go out to board members before the meeting, kind of asking what your priorities are. And I made my add to what we discussed this morning is, you know, if you can kind of send Jay sooner than later. We created this like 20-plus list of topics that could be prioritized. But if there's something you think needs to be a priority, and it might not have made the brainstorming list, please send it to Jay so he can include it on the survey. So when we try to consolidate and prioritize that, that it's on there to be considered in the first place. And it doesn't always just fall into another that might not make the survey. So, um, any, and then that was kind of prioritization kind of work. And we also talked about just reviewing the strategic plan. We're kind of, I think, I still think it's a benefit. We had kind of a veteran board, members have been on the board before. So we're not all new, but not all of us were there during the strategic planning development. And so just kind of understanding what, what we agree to as our strategic plan is. And then some other kind of team building stuff. So Jay, or any of the chairs, do you want to add to that review?
I can, I will say that we are tentatively planning to have this outside in stores on. So we have shelter.
I can, I will say that we are tentatively planning to have this outside at stores on. So we have shelter reserve. If it's inclement weather, I'm sorry to say, we'll be back at the RMS library, although that is a lovely space.
It's a lovely space.
So as far as logistics, that's, that's my big announcement. The survey, what I've done so far is we do have this list of 20 some potential topics that we brainstormed. I categorize them by relevance to the four pillars of the strategic plan. So, and in my cursory initial review, it looks like we're a little light on the academic part. So if any of you have specific things that you think we should focus on academically, there may be room for you to offer those. But I'll have, I'll definitely have a, an other category for you to add those.
I mean, I think this is a good idea because Kim came up with that thing and Ben kind of made a comment this morning. And it was, yeah, there's a lot of things that are kind of just hanging on, right? Like middle school sports. Just keep, keep going, dragging on and we don't really get anywhere. And I think the idea is not to discuss any of these in depth at the op site, but rather to figure out what at least does the board feel is important? And then what's the timeframe on these things? And then we can give the administration some directive or the administration can, Jay and folks can say also, we're already on this guys. Like, don't, you don't need to worry about it. So that's really the idea. It's not to dig into all of them and, you know, because it would be overwhelming, obviously. We're not gonna solve any of these more. We're like, how do we want to hit these or not?
Yeah, like, like, yeah, it's not the, do we do X or Y? It's when do we want to make a decision about X or Y? Or do we not even, like, that's not important to us. So we can kind of, I'm just trying to want to make effective meetings, basically. And we talk about the things that are important to us that are aligning with our strategic plan.
And I would just add that looking at the list, as we were talking about prioritizing, there are all things that I look at the list and say, oh, we've got to go, we have to do all those things. So really, there'll be a space on the survey for you to be thinking about where that is separately. So my hope is that we've come out of the retreat with a sense for how we're gonna spread that work out over the next five years. It's one, one.
And what role the board plays too. I think we discussed that too, right? Some of the things are very important, but we don't have a role to play, right? And that's important, not always. Yeah.
For, for the items that it would be appropriate for, do we have cost estimates for that? So could we, could we, when having the discussion, would we have some idea of the relative cost of the things that we're considering? So that, you know, factors into the consideration.
I mean, the only thing that I can think of that was on there that I think has, the cost has been shared, right? Which was the Norwich sixth grade. And I think the point was not to talk about the substance of the matter because I actually think a lot of these is, we don't have enough information currently, right? And so it's, okay, in the next year, we need to have enough information to make a decision about throwing an idea. There are middle school schools, right? Like that. And we don't have the information right now. But what, when do we need to have that information? And when do we, you know, what kind of steps or goals we would have? So I don't anticipate us kind of, again, talking about the substance. I don't think we'd have enough time. Or frankly, the information to do that. But I think that's kind of the idea. So it's very processy, which is not very exciting. But, you know, I think that's at least trying to get us all kind of on the same page and kicking off the year by saying, okay, these are things we, we want to know by what time we can kind of map out our committee work, our agendas, goals, that kind of thing.
And I just want to emphasize, it would be important to do the advanced work. Like, it'll really help us at the retreat. Have a, have discussions that will help us make some decisions by the end of it. Otherwise, we'll spend the whole retreat doing the advanced work. If we can do the advanced work in advance, that would be great. And then also, please send Jay, I mean, there will be on the survey an other line. So you can insert topics that you feel are important. But if you can send them to Jay first, it means other people will be able to vote on it as well. Like, all the others, obviously, we won't be able to get a vote on. So if you, you know, the list is 22 items, it's the strategic plan, it's sixth grade, maybe in the sixth grade from Norwich over to RMS, it's athletics, it's, you know, it's stuff like that. So think about things like that. Don't worry about whether it's already on the list. Jay will take care of the duplication. Just send topics.
Jay, you know, if, just talking out loud, Jay, if you don't mind just sending what the list currently is and if your favorite one didn't make it, send an email back.
Can we attach it to the agenda now?
Uh, I could, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Then it's done. You can look at it.
And that the order is not in any particular order?
Right.
Oh, definitely not.
You know, your cost comment, we'll probably weigh into priorities too, right? Like, if we can probably talk about potential costs and what we think it would be. And, yeah, I mean, say this is a $5 million thing and that's what's not gonna happen to us.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, not surprisingly, right? We are rapidly heading in Vermont towards another funding crisis for Norwich that I think is gonna, it has the potential, I think, to drive discussions around any of this stuff. And the issue being is that we're not gonna know the outcome by May 11th. So I mean, we can have all of these initial discussions. I think the, it's the money aspect that is probably gonna be crucial on both on the revenue side as well as on the expense side. And, I don't know, I'm pretty pessimistic right now.
Not everything on this, you're saying?
And so that's good. Like, if there are things on the list that are not, not, nothing to funding, then let's talk about those.
I'm keeping out of.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not everything involves, actually, some of the things involve, you know, cost cutting, right? Like, I mean, that's, that's an idea, right? Like, so, you know, I think there's, again, I don't think it's, uh, I really don't think this is a commitment to any particular decision. It's just, what do we want to be talking about in the next year? As far as in our meetings, what kind of decisions do we want to, do we want to make a decision on X topic? You know, not, we know that the X topic is gonna cost $2 million, $8 million, whatever. You know, it's just more like, do, what do we want to hear? What is more, you know, is still on that more process thing? Like, how do, what kind of information do we need to know? Not, we are doing this. I think it's a little different. You know, you might, for example, you might see an item on the agenda and say, I think we should really put this to bed. I think it's a terrible idea, but I won't have a discussion about it. So we never talk about it again, right? Like, that could be a high priority and you are not in favor of it, right? It just, just to kind of give you a sense of, I don't know, I guess, what, what we're kind of looking at. Because you look at this list and it just feels very cumbersome to think about, how do we do all this? How do we have these discussions? And, and yeah. So then, not seeing any other comments.
Moving on.
Perfect. So moving on, we have business requiring action. Do I hear a motion for items B through F by consent?
I move to approve items B, C, D, E, and F by consent.
Great. Do I hear a second? Thank you very much. Um, great. Discussion?
Yes, we've gone on pointing out that those two policies are nearly things that we all sign off on for investments and conflicts of interest that are fairly forward with, if you don't remember those.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Anything from the public? Alright, so can I hear a vote, Neil?
Oh, yes.
Kristi, yes?
Costi, yes? Ken, yes?
Nelson, yes?
Ari, yes?
Hartman, yes. And I realized that we are all here in person. Nobody is on time. So I guess we could have made that a little bit more official. And then the next item is G. Do I hear a motion for that?
Yep. I move to approve the tuition rate for Richmond Middle School and the amount of $25,254 and $23,419 for Hanover High School.
Do I hear a second, Lisa? Any questions, comments? Anything from the public? Great. All those in favor, raise your hand, yes. All those opposed and abstained? And it was a unanimous yes. Thank you very much. So the report of the chair, that is me. I, I just basically kind of gave a little bit of it. We worked as the four chairs to look at committee assignments. And the board retreat, we, we also talked a little bit about, you know, whether we want to have a kind of more discussions basically about state legislature and how to have those discussions. We'll probably have more of those at the FU meeting coming up. But I think Deb will also be reporting committee reports about some state legislatures. So that's what I think is listed here under the chair report. So any other questions or comments? The public? Seeing none. We can move to committee reports. So anything from the committee, Deb?
Sure. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have the opportunity to sign onto a letter that is from educators to, it's described as local elected. So it could absolutely be from select board members as well. But it's to the State Board of Education about the education 306 rules. So these are the standards that are revised every 10 years. And the hope is that the board will simply renew the current standards. And in the conversation with Kim, she said, what are some of the issues for us at Dresden about the changes in the standards? And quite frankly, many of them will be of greatest complication for schools that are struggling to pass their budgets. So there are changes from standards that say you shall do this to, you may, but you, you know, you don't have to. There are changes, for example, removing maximum class sizes. Those are things that we are not likely to do here. But if these changes go through, there are some things that will have an impact on us simply because we are in the state of New Hampshire. And these standards are going to diminish the credibility and the importance of a high school diploma. And I think we will become, regardless of the fact that we are Hanover High School, we are Dresden, we will be one of many high schools in New Hampshire which will not have a diploma that means what it used to. And I want to speak only specifically about one change, which is that the, the state is looking at moving from instruction with certified teachers to learning opportunities. And we saw this with Prager. So we have teachers here at school prepared to teach financial literacy. But now the state has said a student can take a 45-minute online class without a teacher, without any follow-up instruction, and receive a half-credit that we have to award to any student who chooses to follow that option. And there is little question that these revised standards are moving to a place where there will be many more online opportunities for students to pursue. And we will have to accept them. We will not know who's offering them. We will not know what the expectations are. We will not know about any kind of assessments. We won't know whether they meet any sorts of standards. We will simply have to give credit for them. And I think those are probably the two issues I would speak to the most. I can talk ad nauseam. But there's also a, a website that I sent to Jay that he can share in the agenda. If you want to see a really quick little, it's all, the material on this website is presented by a nonpartisan group. And they have a little video and they talk through scenarios. There's one child who goes to a, you know, Oyster River or Hanover High School, it's not called either one, type of school. And then another student, just to show points of comparison as we go through the changes in the document. The letter was shared with me by a member of the Concord School Board who's also involved with her job with Granite State Progress. And she has shared that with me. And I can, again, share it if anyone is interested in signing onto it. And it's very specific. And the letter, as well as looking at that website, perhaps seeing the video, should inform you if you have questions. But I'm also happy to answer any of them. So it's a letter. It's about standards. And one other thing that I want to point out is that the process has been appalling. And teachers have, have not been involved. Educational administrators have not been involved. Christine Downing, who is a force of nature. She's director of curriculum for Cornish Plainfield and I think Grantham, I'm trying to remember what the three schools are. She took it upon herself to form a group of people, to pull together public school educators to talk about these standards last spring. And she really, she's got an incredible document, again, which I can share if anybody wants to see it. But she didn't take the fact that we were omitted, that professionals were omitted from this process. She just, she just refused to accept it. And she said, well, I'm, we are doing the work anyway. And here is our, you know, outside group report, if you will. So there's been a lot of pushback. But as I'm sure you know, if you're paying attention to NHPR, it, it's not a good situation in Concord with the Department of Education right now.
Any questions?
What's the, what's the timeline on this?
The timeline is, I believe, by the 29th of April. Let me just check. So wait, yes. Yeah. I think that's when they.
That's the time, the timeline for the approval process for the change in the rule set.
That's the timeline to get signatures for the letter. I am less clear what the timeline is for when the Board of Education will, probably shortly after that.
That's because it's unclear. Because I went to something that Christine did. Sorry, I went to a PD that Christine did the day that it snowed. So we did it all virtually. There were probably 35 of us going over all the 306 rules and various different, you know, various different subjects to look at it. And it really is, it's, you know, it takes something that used to be four pages long diminishes it to like three sentences. I have something that actually compares what it used to be to what it would be now. I don't know if you have the same idea.
I do.
Yeah. And, and she said, you know, they all showed up thinking that they would get a chance to talk. And, and sort of the meeting ended. So, yeah, it's, I had sort of the same feeling. Like, I, I think we'd be fine in Hanover because I think people would continue to do what we do. But it, it could be really difficult to handle the process. Especially if you take away, you know, you don't need 24 in a class, 50 in a class.
There are lots of details that I could go into that will have an impact on other school districts. So, but I see it more as us having an obligation from a civic point of view to try to push back. And the letter that Sarah Robinson is circulating asks for, it says the State Board of Education is accepting public comment online until April 30th. So I can share that with you if you want me to. I don't know what the best format is, whether it's to just send it to Jay to share out with the Dresden School Board?
I would send it to Kim and then have Kim BCC it to the rest of the board.
Did I send it to you already?
I think you did. Yes. And I think we just wanted to have this discussion and then now it's in the public. We'll be sending.
I could not open that link. For whatever reason, it was, it was giving me a blank screen when I tried to open the attachment. So it might be my problem.
No, it's probably the way I sent it.
Lisa? Yeah, just a quick question. And thanks for keeping track of this. I haven't been as on top of it as I should. I am wondering if in this work, where, does that include the divisive concept stuff that is going? I am wondering if in this work, where, does that include the divisive concept stuff that is going on? So that is also completely separate.
Those are separate house bills. This is, um, this is a process that happens theoretically every ten years. They're the state standards.
Okay. And, and so, I mean, probably not for tonight, because I know we're short for time. But I'm just wondering if we could get a little bit of an update on those sorts of things that affect teacher licensure? Because I, I am concerned.
Well, part of this-
I'm concerned.
One of the things about the standards that would be changed is that if you're only, that you don't have to have teacher certification if you're hired on a part-time basis to teach a course.
I'm, I'm more worried about getting in trouble if you err in teaching things that people are saying.
I completely get that. But I'm just saying, this is the one piece of the standards that has to do with teacher certification.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And my, my question about the Ed three oh six, so I've been following this along. And actually, if you remember, who made that a year ago, kind of gave a presentation-
Yes.
-that was a copy and paste essentially what NHSBA is reporting out on what's happening with the minimum standards. And I think I was like eleven bullet points or something like that. And, and I really did copy and paste because this is very much out of my realm of like what the, what these sentences mean in actuality. And so my, I guess, questions that always percolate as far as like what, how does this impact our school? And it's kind of two things. One, what I'm hearing, don't know, right? Like it, it is, it does seem to be kind of diluting the, the shells to mazes in a lot of different areas, which really does open, and this is the minimum standards for education of what is the, uh, kind of, what is the per pupil funding amount for inadequate education? And does that mean that it would still be that same seventy-six hundred dollars that was kind of ruled? Or is it less? You know, I, I think it's a question. I don't, and I think that's what I'm hearing is like the, the questions around the shells to mazes. And then the other, so that would be kind of a funding part of it. In addition to, uh, now we're in the realm of mazes versus shells, which is really hard to navigate from an operational perspective. And then the other thing is we have minimum, our, our current policy, right, is to kind of just mirror the minimum graduation requirements. And if the minimums change, does, do we need to have a thoughtful policy review about graduation requirements? And do we want to continue with that or not? You know, I, I think that's just another thing that I'm thinking about.
There is also, if I may, the issue of local control over our diploma and what it says to get a Hanover High School diploma. And we won't have that control if they continue to say it's all of these learning opportunities are available to students and you must give them credit. We're doing that work.
Yeah, Julie, I'm just kind of, because I said some things that you probably-
No, no, it's just I was curious if it's a hypothetical or not in terms of are these laws that are going to pass, but they will impact our community? And we just got our first PragerU personal finance credit that we have to award, which we have to. It kills me to do it because the class here is so amazing. And that class is not amazing in any way, shape or form. And so we're certifying like that graduate has this requirement met. So it, it, it's coming here too. Like at first I thought it might not, we just won't have to deal with it. And then just the diploma piece, there's a small group in the high school, just for you to know, that there's working on different diplomas. It's like this idea of having like the standard Hanover High School diploma and then the arts diploma and the STEM diploma and the, and creating different requirements that might be on, be beyond the basic that we're going to then start to run by the staff. But we're like trying to create those down, standardize them, and then see what the staff thinks before we eventually maybe approach this group of changing how we do.
And just now you're right. So just to answer, or I guess to clarify, right? So the reason why we're saying like Ed three oh six versus like HB or SB, right? These aren't House and Senate bills. This is an executive branch rewriting of the rules. So there isn't that same legislative process, right? Because it's the executive branch. So that, I think that's also why we're a bit unclear on timelines and, you know.
Is that sort of separation of degrees? Is that in response to this or is that a separate thing?
No, no, that was more in response to strategic plan and conversations that were happening about the different pathways to Hanover High School preparing students for that. So that was, that was part of that discussion.
All right, thank you, Deb, as our NHSBA rep. Appreciate your work there. Any other committee reports for Dresden? Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And I really will be brief. We had a meeting this evening at RMS, which was the parent meeting to review the RMS-specific survey results from the 2022 Strategic Plan Survey and the 2023 Costing Out Survey. And I want to thank Ben for lots of hours of work in disaggregating all this data and putting together the presentation. My big role in these are facilitating some conversations and introducing Ben. So we didn't have much of a turnout, but we did spend the entire ninety minutes, went through both, um, both surveys with both of our attendees. And had some great, really did have some good conversation. And for us, reviewing it each time, again, informs the work we're doing on the strategic plan. And also on what we might want to ask when we do follow-up surveys moving forward. So that was that. I do want to address the recent NHPR article, which made reference to our district and me personally. Like a lot of articles, I'm sure they had a lot of information to cover and there was a lot that wasn't printed. I believe the reporter did write to know request for me, which I gave her. I can't remember how many different documents, interviewed me at my office, interviewed me on the weekend at home. And I said a lot more than was in the article. It's maybe better for our district that it wasn't all printed. But I do want to say that on both sides of the river right now, it feels very much like we are in a defensive mode against our own, against elements of our own government in terms of just a, a real sort of brazen, out in the open attack on public education. It's being done in a meaningful way on a culture war front that was the focus of that particular article. But just some of the legislate, legislative moves and, and just bumbling, what seems to be happening right now. I, I, I can't tell if it's all intentional, but the net effect is that we're finding ourselves, in, in the case of the Ed three oh six standards, reducing the, that essentially what Deb referred to, essentially just decreasing the value of the diploma. On the Vermont side, a number of my peers and I met with the incoming Secretary of Education in Vermont, who was quite interested in the idea of an interstate school district and said that she's eager to learn about it. Her, her, her background and experience really is in the charter world and in, in bringing alternatives to traditional public education to scale. Has never taught, been a, a school administrator or a superintendent or curriculum director or anything like that, that you might think would be helpful in running, governing the public education system. So it, it feels very much like we are on the defensive. And that's the tone of all of our meetings, our superintendent meetings. It's, it's essentially what we do. And what I've found throughout my career is that we, as educators, are not fighters by nature. We try to collaborate and get along. And we're pretty, we can be pretty easy marks initially when those sorts of things are done to us. It takes us a little while to rally. And, and we need to be making it very clear to everyone out there just how important vital public education is. Those who began our, our democratic experiment knew it. Department didn't matter what side of the aisle they're on. Adams and Jefferson both just emphasized the importance of an educated electorate. And, and I, I really feel like we, we need to be not just engaged with legislature, but we need to be making sure that we are doing our absolute best to continue to prove our worth. And just seeing the presentations we had today assured me that we are. The efforts underway here at the high school are impressive. We have a lot to be proud of and we need to keep it going. And so that's, I guess, all I'll say for the moment on that. And then, yeah?
I just wanted to add that the story's not over. There's another part today, a lengthy piece on NPR, a sit in your car when you got into your destination piece. It's a follow-up and also includes an op-ed that, that'll be wrote. So it's, it's now two days in a row. So it's, it's not-
Was that the one about the art teacher?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not over.
It's not over. They're really sticking with it.
Well, and the last thing I want to mention, just you should be aware that in addition to the work that we, that's been going on on both sides of the river with teacher evaluation in the last couple of years, I want to thank Robin for spearheading administrator evaluation as well. And so Robin and I have been working, we, we will be doing principal evaluations together this year. And the administrative team had come up with a, they, they wanted to adopt a rubric in much the same way that both, both of our teachers associations did with regard to the Danielson model. They've adopted a rubric with eight different domains and fifty-five different rating categories within that rubric that Robin and I are using to evaluate our principals and they'll be in turn using to evaluate their associate principals. We ranged, this range finding the other day, Robin and I both did individually an, an assessment of one principal. And then we did another principal together and we found that our ratings were amazingly consistent. And we had different evidence to, to provide for each of our ratings. But then we did the next one together and that's how we're going to be doing them moving forward. But we'll be rolling that out with, with our administrative, we had a meeting with the, the team to identify from that, those fifty-five items in the rubric, which ones they felt were, were most amenable to employee feedback. So we'll be using that same rubric in redevelop, redeveloping the, uh, the staff survey that goes out for the principals as well. And that's it.
And Ben?
I'll chime in on, it's a good discussion about the surveys. Also, since we last met, we presented to the RMS staff, which had about sixty-some people there. And that went very well, just like the Ray School one did. But we're getting lots of very positive feedback, both about how interesting the results are, but also actionable items they can take in the future, as well as what they would like to see on future surveys. And we have the Mary Cross staff tomorrow and the Mary Cross parents next week in high schools in May. So we will continue to provide updates on that.
Okay.
So for Jay and Deb, maybe I should have asked Deb this question. So, and again, we can't, we have all this, what do we think? So what's the goal, right? So the Ed six oh three, so like, is it to help other lower schools come up? Or is this really an attack on public education? Where the idea is, it's let's stop funding public education and give people their money back? And is this really what it is? Like property tax are too high? Let's let people keep their money in their pocket and spend on private education? Like what's, is that-
The, the, the Secretary of Education in New Hampshire, homeschooling all those children, has no public school experience, no teaching experience, no administrative experience, no license, has put people on the Board of Education who have no experience with education. And his goal, I, I would say it to his face, is to diminish public education, to help facilitate a shift to private schools, to homeschooling, to diminish the mess of the education that students are receiving. And to that end, has taken millions and millions of dollars out of the Education Trust Fund and refused to implement any kind of system of overview, of evaluation, of accountability. I mean, it's, it, it's extraordinary and it's very, very transparent.
Any other questions or comments for superintendents?
Sorry if that seemed like an angry question, but this is kind of how to get that law.
Anything from the public? Thank you, Jay.
Sure.
And Robin, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I'm very brief today. You have your General Assurances Form for Dresden, who just did this recently for Hanover. But it's our requirement for accepting the federal grants. We accept Title I, Title II, and Title IV. And the SRSAs provide us with all of the professional developments, some of the summer programs, and some of the other things that we've been able to purchase, like this year the World War II equipment for, through Title IV. So this just guarantees that we'll follow the requirements of the Title IV grants. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that. I've been doing lots of work on those recently. They've added several new reports that we have to quickly, like time-consuming.
Great, and any questions for Robin? As I sign every page of this?
I know.
Run it back with my initials. Anything from the public? Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we've already done the Business Administrators Report earlier. So we will move on to non-public session. And this is if we decide we require one. Do I hear any motion to go into non-public to discuss hiring? If nothing, then we can maintain public session. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve new hires?
I moved to approve hiring Richard Capanero as a one-year English teacher and hiring Elizabeth Burrows as a one-point-oh school counselor, as presented.
Go here, second, is that Ben? Ben, seconds? Any discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing none. And since we are all here, we can do, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? And abstained? And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we have, still have a member of the public. And now is the time to do our, our final public comment period. If, Kate, I see her raising her hand, so we're still alive at nine, past nine o'clock. So Kate, if you'd like to move over and-
You're good, Kate.
Thanks so much, Erin. Hi, it's Kate Hilton from Hanover. I have a child at the Ray School and another at RMS. And I apologize, I meant to speak in person so I could see all of you during the first round of public comments this evening, but I was late, just juggling a little too much this evening. So you may recall that in the midst of the very busy SAU seventy budget seven, uh, budget season in December and November and January, you all heard from me, you heard from a variety of other SAU parents who are sharing their concerns at your meetings around the proposed RMS math curriculum changes. And I just really wanted to come to just genuinely offer my thank you to, to the board. Big thanks to Jay and to Robin, to all of you for taking those comments seriously, for looking carefully at the proposed changes and simply recognizing the need to slow things down and to look at a full district math curriculum review, one that documents the curriculum across the district, one that gathers baseline data in non-pandemic times, one that sets improvement goals, one that's targeting truly equitable and truly evidence-based teaching practices, one that's putting safety net systems in place in advance to support any learners who might fall between the cracks, one that takes seriously supporting all learners to be successful, and one that is supporting, I hope, adequate teacher training to execute effectively. So just really a huge thanks to the board, Jay, Robin, for slowing things down to ensure that all of our math learners' needs are being considered in review of the math curriculum and offerings. I'm really looking forward to hearing more from the administrators, from the teachers, from, you know, the, the broader district administrators as well about the thinking at next week's math meeting. It's at the RMS auditorium on Tuesday, April thirtieth. I did see somewhere it started at six and somewhere else that it starts at- I did see somewhere it started at six and somewhere else that it starts at 6:30, but either way, I'm hopeful that as many board members will attend as possible. I also.
Can I interrupt you? It looks like it might start at six.
Okay, great. I'll be there. Thanks, Tim.
Sorry, keep going.
And I just wanted to also encourage the board to consider more broadly than just beyond the math curriculum, the ongoing resources needed to support Rob and Jay, all the SAU 70 administrators and teachers to do the documentation of the curriculum that's a part of our strategic plan and applying a very thorough process to the curriculum review. It, it takes time, it takes energy, it takes resource. It also takes resource to support teachers to build new skills needed to deliver pedagogical changes so that they're effective in doing so, you know, right out of the gates. So we, you know, just want to, I just wanted to continue to encourage you to also incorporate parent and student input in the process and really look forward to future board meetings in which curriculum review is a regular board topic. I guess I would add that to the, the public request around constant review of curriculum topics at the board meetings. And I guess that's it for me. So just a big thanks and looking forward to more meaningful dialogue. Thanks to, to all of you.
Thank you for your comment.
Kate, two minutes and 59 seconds, well done.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Let's see, any? Then moving to our interim portion, if you have any agenda topics for next meeting, please submit them. I will also add, please submit your kind of key priorities after you receive to Jay to make sure that they're included for the report retreat survey. And our next meeting is Tuesday, May 21st. And see anything else?
And just so you know, Jay, if you refresh, the potential retreat topics are already there.
Perfect.
Yeah, so they're, they're under board retreat topics. Jay does not disround.
Perfect.
If you are looking for them.
For everyone. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn the meeting at 9:05 PM.
And everyone seconds. I'll give it to Lisa, I saw her address first. And we do have to go around the horn, so Neil?
What do we do, yes?
Kristi, yes.
Kristi, yes. Oh, yes.
E D, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Very, yes.
Hartman, yes. Thank you very much, have a good night.